It is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson. Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right, welcome to your City Hall, to everyone in the audience, and to those that are joining us virtually. Welcome as well. Andrew Dunn, Councilor Dunn, is with us virtually today. We're on item number two, which is Proclamations. Two A is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and this will be read by Mayor Pro Tem Alter.
Whereas domestic abuse, dating abuse, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence abuse are at higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. And whereas domestic abuse in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported. And whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic abuse, their children, and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and within intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence and abuse in intimate relationships for more than 43 years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, Health and Human Services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. And whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic abuse and to prevent future violence in our community. Now, therefore, I, Megan Alter, Mayor Pro Tem of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 23, 2023, to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Iowa City, Iowa, and urge all community members to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. And here to accept is Altima Dia.
I first want to thank all of you for all of your support of DVIP over all of the past years, 44 years now officially, as well as the support for the Finding Safety, Building Hope Capital Campaign for the new shelter. I handed out some forms, but just wanted to highlight a couple numbers. The first being that we helped 969 Iowa City residents in the past year, and we provided 15% more services to those individuals than we have in previous years. That indicates that the need of each victim is growing, as we would expect with all of the other social constraints. But we are able to do that because of support like yours. We also have a number of events celebrating victim survivors and providing their basic needs that I did want to draw the council's attention to. The first is on October 14th. That's our Shop for Shelter, and many of you have volunteered and helped with that. And we are also doing a panel discussion discussing the effects of poverty on domestic violence victims and how those two pieces really impact economic abuse, as well as the sort of traditional physical and emotional abuse that we think of when we think of victim survivors, and that is on October 18th. I'm happy to answer any questions about the numbers or about the campaign if you have them. We are nearly 80% of the way toward our fundraising goal, in large part thanks to the City of Iowa City and our community here.
Thank you so much for being here today, and we just applaud all of the work that you all do. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Item 2B of Proclamations is Fire Prevention Week, and this is read by Councilor Taylor.
Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Iowa City, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,880 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 361,000 residential fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas Iowa City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. And whereas Iowa City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme "Cooking Safety Starts With You" effectively reminds us that cooking fires are the number-one cause of home fire and home injuries. Now, therefore, I, Pauline Taylor, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October 8th to 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urge everyone to install smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts during Fire Prevention Week 2023 and year-round. Accepting is Lieutenant Alex Swanson from the Iowa City Fire Department.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, Mayor, and council members. If I may have a few words. Fire Prevention Week is a reminder to learn and identify hazards in our homes to keep ourselves, loved ones, and others safe. We must actively take the steps necessary to prevent fires before they start, to have working smoke alarms so that we may get out safely in case of a fire, and take the steps necessary to prevent burn injuries from cooking and other heat sources. To learn more about this, a good start is the National Fire Protection Association's website. They have a Fire Prevention Week website. It's FPW.org. Pretty easy one. And of course, you can always visit the Iowa City Fire Department. We have four stations. You can give us a call or email us. We'll be happy to help. So, thank you very much for the time to recognize Fire Prevention Week coming up, October 8th through the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2C is Indigenous Peoples' Week. Whereas the City of Iowa City recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas the City recognizes the fact that Iowa City is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous people of this region. And whereas the City is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, as exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations, sponsor International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations and the Americas. And whereas the City strongly supports the preposition that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of the region. And whereas the City strongly encourages schools to include the teaching of indigenous peoples, history in its curriculum, and encourages other businesses, organizations, and institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, therefore, I, Mayor, now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Iowa City. And to receive this is Sakawas Novis of Great Plains Action Society.
Hi, that's Great Plains Action Society. Thank you very much. Ahai kitata mahin. And it's always nice to see indigenous peoples and our issues and our movements being recognized. And I hope that we can go beyond Proclamations sometime soon and create more partnerships, stronger partnerships. I'm really excited this year that the Parks and Recreation Department reached out to me, and I'm working with them and the Office of, well, we are actually, myself and Jessica Engelking from our organization, are working with Parks and Recreation, the City, or the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and then the Human Rights Commission. So, it's been really great. I recently had some talks with the Human Rights Commission about the needs of the indigenous community, and so we're doing what we can. And of course, all of you here know that I'm on the Truth or Reconciliation Commission. So, you know how I feel about a lot of those things that need to be done here and everywhere, actually, on this stolen land, as we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I want to tell a story, because it's a really important story. I want to talk about 2020. And in Des Moines, when we were holding our annual July 4th Abolish Monuments to White Supremacy rally, because it's indigenous peoples celebrating July 4th can be kind of difficult. And, you know, we like to talk about all the monuments all over the state and the country that are up, not just monuments, but murals and, you know, other kind of edifices that you see that basically depict, you know, white supremacy and colonial capitalism. And so, we had our, you know, typical rally that we have, which is always peaceful, and we usually have it in front of the two white settler invaders with the natives sitting by their feet pointing westward, showing them a way to find a home. And about 100 white supremacists or nationalists showed up with guns, and that's because they wanted to protect their Columbus monument. They wanted to protect the bust of Columbus, which is over on the other side of the grounds. And, you know, we weren't there to destroy anything. We weren't there to take anything down, but I know that there was tension in 2020, of course. And so, they were there, and they told us not to bring our children, and we had a lot of threats ahead of time, but we showed up anyways. And I just want you to know that this is the kind of sentiment that still is here in this country. And just celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, just giving us a proclamation is not enough. Like, we need to do more, right? So, that's why I'm happy that we're celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, first of all. But also, what we need to do is negate Columbus Day, because that's still celebrated. It's still on the books federally, and it's still on the books here statewide as well. So, how do we actually, like, truly celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day if Columbus Day is still also being proclaimed? So, I would ask that the City of Iowa City, you know, maybe do something about that. Maybe be the first city to say, hey, like, no to, like, Columbus Day, period, but also no to, you know, our administration, our state administration, no to the federal government. Like, let's get this off the calendar, period, because we can't truly celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day if we're also still, like, allowing people to uplift, you know, a murderer, a rapist, a slave trader, whatever you want to, he was all those things. He was, you know, the worst of the worst. And, you know, let's just, let's do better. So, ahai kitata mahin. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming today. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items three through six. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All right. And would anyone from the public like to address anything on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. I see no one in person or online. Council discussion.
I just wanted to acknowledge 6E, donation to animal shelter. I was just so highly impressed and moved by this and would like to express my sincere thanks to her. It was a donation to the animal shelter by Jacqueline Flink, who named the Iowa City Animal and Adoption Center as a beneficiary in a life insurance policy. And it just brings me to tears to even think about that. The animal shelter is a great part of Iowa City and can always use as many donations as possible. It costs a lot of money, and as we saw recently, they received over 130-something dogs and had to really scramble to make ends meet to have shelter for those animals. So, thank you again to Jacqueline Flink.
And for my part, I just want to bring up, actually, notice of 6D, just in passing here, but it's exciting that the winter shelter agreement has gone through and that there will be an emergency additional temporary overnight shelter during the winter months. And much kudos to staff and Shelterhouse for working together to get this up and running and to have this in place.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Item number eight is Planning and Zoning Matters, 8A, zoning code amendment, housing choice, supply, and affordability.
Item seven. Community comment? Do we skip that?
For the past one?
No, for the whole, not on the agenda. Sorry.
We did. Typically, it has its, yeah, its own page, and I'm like, yeah. And I looked over it. All right, we are at item number seven, which is community comment. This is an opportunity for your voice to be heard on any item that is not on our agenda. And we are going to allow individuals three minutes to speak during this time. And just for notification, we do have sign-in at the podium, but also some stickers in the back that people can drop in the box. And we're going to welcome, welcome.
Hey, Brandon Ross from Iowa City. Good to see you at City Council. I'm a Democrat. I'm not against Republicans. You people are cool, too. I'm anti-fascist, though. I'm anti-Nazi. I'm anti-fascist. I want to bring up that on the day of Yom Kippur, which is Jewish highest holiday. I'm Jewish on my mom's side, where Ukrainian Jewish and some Polish Jewish, that in the Canadian Parliament, tribute was paid and applauded by Justin Trudeau and Volodymyr Zelensky to a Ukrainian Nazi Waffen SS soldier from World War II. On the holiest day of the year, tribute was paid to a fascist. And it was appalling. It was appalling to me. It was appalling to my family. And sometimes, though, something is just what it is. The Canadian Parliament tried to back it up. It was not very well done. Zelensky went to, back to Ukraine, to Babayar, where 100,000 Jews were killed in Western Ukraine to try to show that he was not fascist. But unfortunately, the government that is in power is actually in Ukraine, is a fascist neo-Nazi government. And this started in 2014, when Viktor Yanukovych was overthrown. He was democratically elected. The U.S. had a part in that. And then fascist militias actually attacked Eastern Ukrainians for over eight years. Zelensky came to power in 2019 with 70% popularity. By the end of 2021, he had 24% popularity. He had opposition leaders, who were more popular than him, imprisoned. He had opposition parties closed down. He had opposition media closed down. He had Russian language denied in public office. He also had closed down churches that were Russian Orthodox within Ukraine. Russian is the second language in Ukraine, but 2/3 to 3/4 of the people speak it, 1/3 speak it as a first language, and so too Zelensky. Right now, the United States is supporting a fascist neo-Nazi regime, and we should pull our money out. And I beg people in Iowa City, Johnson County, to call for negotiations within the Democratic Party, of which I am a member. Call for negotiations, no more weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public comment time. Going to move on to item number eight, Planning and Zoning Matters, 8A, zoning code amendment, housing choice, supply, and affordability. Ordinance Amendment Title 14, zoning code to improve housing choice, increase housing supply, and encourage housing affordability. This is the second consideration. And can I get a motion to consider it, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes. And we welcome you. There is a sign-in there. And I'm going to allow three minutes.
Right, I tried to keep my remarks to three minutes. But if I go over a sentence or two, it's on here, but I wanted to pass these out, because there are a couple photographs at the bottom that are part of what I'm saying. So, I'll just leave, I'll bring them up after. Okay. I'm Mary Bassloneger, and I'm from Goose Town, so I'm just talking for myself tonight. At the end of July, I was informed that a 40-some-page packet with proposed changes to zoning was underway. I was leaving on a three-week vacation, so didn't have time to read through this quite dense document, but a number of items stood out that raised concern. When I got back, I took time to speak with some neighbors on both sides of Davenport Street. None of them were aware of the document or of the proposed changes. Some probably still aren't. It concerns me that this will impact homeowners in a big way, and they haven't received a notification letter from the city. The other concern is it is happening very fast. Personally, I think the process should be slowed down to be absorbed by those who will be impacted. Secondly, because I recalled no letter from the city, I felt I had to find out on my own who owned properties, who rented properties, and who held them in some company's name. I came up with the following numbers for Goose Town, including Dodge-Torino, Bloomington-Toronos. By my count, there are 269 houses owned by 52 LC, LLC, management companies, trusts, and two housing fellowships, for a total of about 30% of Goose Town, already being rented, and that doesn't count unknown rentals by individual owners. That means that about every third house is rented, creating great turnover, not knowing neighbors, lack of stability, and a fear that some developer is coming in to replace the house next door with a possible two-unit or third behind. Please try to imagine this happening in your own neighborhood. One neighbor told me that she had meant to build a lovely matching garage to her home, but found out the developer had bought next door and was reluctant to invest now, not knowing what he would build. Her concern is correct. In the last year, four nearby houses have been demolished. A small historic cottage at 935 Bloomington was one of those. Its rebuild sold recently for $536,220. Is this what is meant by affordable housing? Please consider the profits for developers that this is creating or will create. Goose Town is at their mercy, and we have been forewarned. At a planning and zoning meeting...
Thank you.
All right.
And you can pass it to our city clerk.
Right. I hope you'll please look at the last couple of sentences. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Karen Cobby. I live in Iowa City. And it was kind of uncanny today that I sent an email to City Council, because I've had lots of people ask me questions, and I was confused about whether this ordinance embedded density bonuses by right of the zoning, or if it was triggered by providing affordable housing. And then talked with some council members today and found out that there was some discussion about trying to do the latter. And I'm hoping that you'll talk about that a little bit. And if, I don't know what the plans are today, if this will be deferred so that you can have that conversation, so that density bonuses are provided when the redevelopment or the increased density provides something the community sorely needs, and that's affordable housing. I love that the framework for that is income-based. I think that's a really good framework. So, I know there'll be some discussion about, is there precedent for that, which I think there is in the code, but there's, it might decrease how much increased density there is, and I think that's a policy decision versus a legal one, although your city attorney will guide you on all of that. And I'm hoping nonprofits will really be the entities that want to do this. And maybe if you move in this direction, maybe it's a pilot program that's just in the university impact zone versus all neighborhoods that have this zoning. So, I'm hoping to hear some discussion about this tonight and hope that you'll end up deferring so that you can really seriously consider this option. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I would like to make a motion this evening to defer our second vote until October 17th, to allow time for staff to explore ways to use the zoning amendment to further advance the council goal of creating income-restricted affordable housing in addition to increasing housing supply and choice.
I would be in favor of that.
So, moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. Any further discussion on that item? I would be in favor, just to allow time, allow staff some time to get some information to us.
I would also agree with that, because hopefully, Councilor Harmson will be with us, too, so we'd have a full council to discuss it.
If no other discussion, roll call, please. And this is a motion to defer.
This is a voice vote, so just all of the favor.
Yep. So, this is a motion to defer until our next meeting, October 17th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, six to zero.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just if there are any questions that staff may have about what's being proposed, is it okay if we direct those questions to Councilor Thomas? He and I've had a little bit of discussion, so I have a good idea about what he's thinking of, but just so staff comes fully prepared to discuss the matter with you.
I'm comfortable with that. Are people comfortable with that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you please CC me on that as well?
Councilor Dunn wants CC'd on any other correspondence.
Certainly.
All right, great. We're moving on to item number 8B, which is...
Mayor, I'm sorry. Could we get a motion to accept correspondence?
All right.
Oh, sure.
So moved. Check it.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Taylor to accept correspondence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. Item number 8B is rezoning 715 North Dodge Street, local historic landmark. Ordinance, rezoning property located at 715 North Dodge Street from medium-density, single-family residential with a historic district overlay to OHD-RS-8, in order to designate the property as an Iowa City historic landmark. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
Mayor, I move that the rural... Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, second by Dunn. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I'm just really excited to see this. Emma Goldman is a gem for Iowa City, and it mentions, and it mentions healthcare for women, but it's my understanding that men sometimes utilize the services too. So it's just a great thing, and it's wonderful. It's hard to believe it's been that long, but designating the original building as historic is a good step.
I agree with everything that you said.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, second by Burgess. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number nine A is Iowa City Senior Center exterior building envelope preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Iowa City Senior Center exterior building envelope preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome staff up at this time. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, I'm Kumie Morris. Actually, we have Peter Franks. He's with Franks Group, and he is the architect that we've been working with with the Senior Center project. He is an architect that specializes in historic properties, and he has a small presentation for you.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been told if I just close out of all the warnings, everything will work just fine.
Good luck with that.
So what we're going to talk about very briefly tonight is everything that you see up on the agenda here in this first slide. We're going to talk a little bit about the project background and also a little bit about the history of the Senior Center or the old post office building, and then we'll get into the project scope and what we're doing here today, which is formally the public hearing for the construction documents to be able to be released for public bidding. As Kumie said, my name is Pete Franks or Peter Franks. My firm is the Franks Design Group. We're a small firm based in southwest Iowa, and we work statewide primarily on historic building projects. We are, we're a small firm. We're a three-person operation. We're in storefront on the Courthouse Square in Glenwood in Mills County, and we've been in business since 2006. And as I said, we specialize in historic preservation work. Our role with the Senior Center was initiated when we were a preservation consultant to the local architect who was responsible for the Senior Center master plan initially anchored by Rohrbach Associates in 2020, and then we continued on as a preservation consultant to OPN Architects in 2021 and 2022 as the preservation consultant on the exterior of the building. Going to real quick, just give you a little bit of interesting, what I think is interesting, and hopefully you'll find it interesting, history of the building. So what we see here is an old fire insurance map that shows the footprint of the original post office. It was a relatively petite building, 50 feet by 90 feet at the corner of Washington and Lynn. And this is what that building looked like in its first episode between 1904 and 1930. So it fronted primarily Washington Street, had three big window openings, and the secondary elevation was actually the Washington Street elevation. I'm sorry, the Lynn Street elevation. In 1929 to 1931, the building was substantially expanded and went from 50-foot depth to 130-foot depth. So you can see there, we've got the two colors of how much the building grew over the course of that expansion in 1929 to 31. The other thing that was added during that expansion was an entire upper level. So really, what was kept of the original building is just what you see highlighted here on the Lynn Street elevation, just really the first three bays, a section of lower wall, but the entire upper wall and the entire upper story was added as part of the expansion, as well as more than doubling the footprint of the building. Here's a construction photo from 1930, and what you can see here is the very dark stone is the original stone that was built in 1904. It's soot stain from just the air pollution that we saw in those decades. And everything that you see is the lighter stone is the newer stone that was quarried in Indiana and brought here for the expansion project in 1930 and 31. Another construction photo from that same episode, and what's interesting about this, I don't know, you can't see my mouse here. The alley elevation, the north elevation of the building here is all this very dark stone, which leads us to believe that that entire wall was dismantled, moved 90 feet to the north, and then reconstructed as part of this massive expansion project that took place in 1929 and 1930. We had the benefit in studying the building and doing our work to have a partial set of the original 1929 drawings to study in detail. Wasn't a complete set, but it was a pretty complete set, which is very helpful to us. And as old building people, we really geek out on things like wall sections and window details and things like that. So we spent a lot of time studying those original drawings and our understanding and compiling our understanding of the building and the technical issues that we're trying to address with this project. Some of the terms that we use as far as the building anatomy goes are outlined here. The one that you're going to hear me mention in just a moment is the parapet, which is the section of wall that extends up above the roof. And that's the subject of a great deal of the effort that we're investing into the building with this upcoming project. The other thing I want to mention here is that while the building was in the process of being transitioned from federal ownership to city ownership, it was listed in the National Register of Historic Places, and it's also designated as a local landmark. The third episode of the building took place under the city's custodial care of the building, and that was conversion to the Senior Center, which took place between 1979 and 1981. It was a major comprehensive project, involved the insertion of fire stairs, elevators, restrooms, new systems, and adapting the building to the use of the Senior Center, where it's been in use since 1981. And what I will say is, a kind of personal comment here, is that it was a very sensitive restoration. When the building was converted to the Senior Center, it was done in a very, very thoughtful, sensitive way with a great attention to detail. So we look at this building as a survivor of one episode in 1904, and then a major expansion that was deftly done in 1930, and then an adaptive reuse that was a comprehensive project in 1981. And there's every reason for us to think that this building can see 150, if not 200 years, if it's well taken care of, including the work that we're proposing. So the major projects that have occurred to the building since that conversion were fire sprinklers and ceilings, boiler replacement, and roof replacement with some assorted masonry repairs about 15 years ago. Part of our work with existing buildings is we really get down and dirty with the existing building, and we try and look for the things that need to be repaired, and we look for the signs and symptoms of things that need to be corrected or addressed with proposed work that we're doing here. So we look for signs of movement. This is actually one of the arches over top of one of the monumental entries on the west elevation. We looked at the full exterior just to be able to find all those places where we see movement or signs of stress and strain. We've got some panels of the stone veneer that are badly eroded along the north elevation But the thing that we really stumbled onto and noticed pretty quickly was that the parapets that extend up above the wall that are where the building meets the sky, we saw a lot of movement really on all four elevations of the building, and that's a place where we don't want to see movement. So you can see here in the image here that we've got movement of an inch to an inch and a half, if not two inches, which for a stone building is a lot of physical movement. We've got parapets that we, in kind of exploring this a little bit deeper, found that they were out of plumb by as much as four or five degrees, and this is something that becomes almost on the verge of a safety issue, that we don't want that to go any further. So a big part of what we're correcting for is that out of plumb, out of square condition. In our investigation of the building's anatomy, what we discovered and really uncovered was that the backface of the parapets, which you see here on this image, are constructed of the same brick that's used for the interior, the walls of the building interior, and that brick has, over time, been exposed to water that's gotten saturated and been exposed to freeze thaw deterioration, which then leads it to become more porous, introducing more water into the wall. Ultimately, the freeze thaw action that we see there is what's responsible for those parapets leaning outwards, as we see really across the board at the roof area. The other thing that we're aware of, this is at the interior of the upper level above the lay-in ceiling. So you can see the lay-in ceiling is kind of what looks like the floor here. So we see signs of really incremental, long-term water infiltration above the ceiling there, also related to the parapets and the movement and this brick and stone construction that we see up above there. So we hope that the work that we're proposing here will also take care of any water infiltration or moisture infiltration that's happening in the building or has happened over time. The project scope of work that the public hearing is on tonight is the set of documents that you have available for review prior to the meeting. It's basically to dismantle and reconstruct the existing limestone parapet piers to correct for out of plumb and out of square and reconstruct with reinforced concrete masonry unit cores, reusing the stone wherever possible, as much as possible, except for its damage beyond repair. At the balustrade sections, we'll be dismantling and reconstructing those. We'll be reintegrating the roof system and terminating the roof where all this perimeter work is going on at the parapet area. And then for the balance of the limestone of the entire building, we'll be doing a masonry veneer restoration, remove and replace the panels that are damaged, effect repairs at the damaged panels, and then re-point everything, and then give the building a good cleaning to get rid of a lot of the soot stain that we see on it, especially up by the main cornice. So a couple pages from the documents that are the exhibit to the public hearing tonight, details at the parapet area. And this whole project has been vetted by your Historic Preservation Commission and given a certificate of appropriateness. The estimated cost for the project, for our construction cost, is $1,910,000. Our schedule is to, in two weeks, have a pre-bid meeting, assuming we're approved tonight. Bid opening in about five weeks. We expect onsite work to be next year, and then a phase-two project that would be the windows and the doors in '24 and '25. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you for that very detailed presentation and use of the word anatomy. I enjoyed that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Taylor.
Second. Alter.
Council discussion.
By the looks of the photos, it's a much-needed project, and I appreciate your time and effort and your plans. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may make a comment?
Yes.
I hope that folks in the community that either view this or become aware of the work on the Senior Center are reminded of our council, our community, and our cities overall, in investment and value of the lives of seniors, of their quality of life, and the ability for everyone, regardless of their place in life, to have a really great facility here by the community. So I want people to know, we believe in the Senior Center. We love the Senior Center. We wanted to be good for folks for many years to come. So I will be supporting, of course.
Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item nine B is utility rate, public hearing. This is an ordinance amending Title III entitled Finance, Taxation and Fees, Chapter Four entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties of the City Code to Increase or Change Charges and Fees. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinance must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Second by Dunn. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Thomas.
Second. Second, Burgess.
Moved by Thomas, second by Burgess. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number nine C, water code update, lead service lines. This is an ordinance amending Title 16 entitled Public Works, Chapter Three, City Utilities, Article C, potable water use and service, Section One, definitions in Section Three, connection to distribution water main. This is the first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Alter, second by Burgess. And we're going to invite our staff, Ron Kentucky, up from Public Works.
Good evening, Council. Ron Kentucky, Public Works Director. May 2nd, it's your work session. John Durst, our soup water superintendent, was here and talked about our lead reduction program that we're looking at initiating for our water system. This is kind of the first phase, first leg of that three-legged stool, as he referred to. As you're aware, water service lines are privately owned underground water pipes that connect homes or buildings to the city's drinking water system. Some service lines are made of lead or galvanized iron that have been exposed to lead, which leads to lead deposits. The EPA has found that lead in drinking water is known to cause health problems. The proposed ordinance amendment will amend the city code to promote the removal and lead of galvanized or and galvanized iron contaminated lead from water service connections to the potable water system by prohibiting the repair of lead service lines and requiring full replacement of lead service lines when they develop a leak or other defect. With this ordinance change, if it's approved, this would become effective January 1 of
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I would just observe from our packet that the intent here would be to, I think, at the time of passage and adoption of this, to, that we'll also have a proposal for a program to help provide essentially an insurance coverage-type option that folks could opt into to purchase so that they, to cover the expenses of this, because it will be the property owner's expense to replace the service lines when it comes necessary.
And we'll get to that next. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item nine D is marking an agreement, private water and sewer service lines repair plans. Resolution authorizing the meritor sign and agreement via between the City of Iowa City and the utility service partners Private Label Inc., DBA Service Line, warranties of America to use the city logo for the solicitation of water sewer and internal plumbing emergency America to use the city logo for the solicitation of water sewer and internal plumbing emergency service plans. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All right, and we'll invite Ron up just to kind of talk about this item as well.
All right, Ron Kenaki, Public Works Director. This resolution will approve a marketing agreement between the city and the service line warranties of America to allow the company to use the city logo on mailed solicitations for optional service line repair plans to Iowa City property owners. The marketing, customer service, and repairs will be managed entirely by the company. The city will have review authority of the solicitations prior to mailing, and will include information within the solicitations to educate homeowners about service lines, the impacts of lead on human health, and to consult with their homeowner's insurance providers. The timing of this agreement is intended to make the existence of these optional repair plans known to property owners before the effective date of the proposed service line ordinance amendment on January 1, 2024.
Great. Questions about the cost?
So the way that the agreement is laid out, they will solicit two options. The first option will be $6.75 per month for the water service line. The second option would be for sanitary sewer service lines, and that'll be $7.75 per month. If somebody would decide to provide or go in and accept those services or want to buy those services, they also provide an interior plumbing warranty program, and that's $9.99 a month.
And all of the cost will be between the resident and the service line warranties of America?
That's correct. This is, it would be a direct purchase with that company.
Great, thank you.
Ron, I just had a question. I mean, it's kind of unusual, like we approve of a certain company to have business with the city and city customers. Did someone like look into and research different insurance companies that would provide the best service for our city?
Yes, so the League of Cities is the company or the group that has gone out and looked at this service line protection program, and so we're utilizing them as that resource. There are a number of communities in Iowa that are utilizing this service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to bring him back? No. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Item 9E, Assessment of 91 Commercial Drive. Resolution adopting an assessment schedule for court-ordered fencing at 91 Commercial Drive and directing the city clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Thomas.
All right, and we're going to turn it over to our city attorney, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an unusual request, and that's I'm going to ask counsel to defeat this motion or this resolution, and the reason for that is rather late in the day yesterday, we received payment, complete payment for this. So obviously, that's great for all parties concerned, and thus, we don't want to, well, there's nothing else to assess, and so I would ask counsel to defeat this resolution.
All right, anyone from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
Glad it came to resolution.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
So is...
I'm hoping counsel will vote no.
We're not voting on your motion.
Talk about habit. Sorry. Sorry, all. No. I rescind.
Burgess.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Teague.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Thank you.
Motion fails six, zero to six. It's also confusing.
Something different all the time, isn't it? Thank you, Eric.
Yes, thank you.
We're at item number 10, which is council appointments. 10A is Climate Action Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired position upon appointment through December 31, 2023. There is no gender balance requirement, and we've had quite a few good applicants.
This was an embarrassment of riches.
I'll start by thanking all the applicants. I mean, 12 for one position is amazing, but looking at the list, there are some that will be leaving the commission soon, so keep your thoughts in mind there. But the number of individuals who are knowledgeable and informed about the importance of climate action in our community is really impressive, with community members like these applicants interested in climate action. I have no doubt that Iowa City can achieve our climate action goals, and it was hard to narrow down the list, but I'll start by putting forth just a couple of names and see what others are thinking. I liked Angie Smith. She referred to the challenge of shaping human behaviors, which is kind of what this is all about, to help tackle the climate change, and she is a psychologist, and who knows more about shaping human behavior than a psychologist? Also liked Robert Traer. He says he was in training, but I don't know how long his application was, to be an Iowa City Climate Ambassador. He's a retired teacher and has actually given a number of presentations about climate action, which is what it's all about, getting the education out there, but I'm open to what others think.
I would offer Michael Anderson. I think he's got a really good perspective of the whole situation, the climate crisis, as a journalist. And I also just really liked a lot of his activism. He reported on and participated in the Standing Rock, anti-DAPL, Bitcoin Access Pipeline protest in 2016, and is big on urbanism, which is something I'm also big into. I would put him forth, as well as Zach Arson. But also, I don't really have any concerns with the people that were mentioned by Counselor
I would also add Hannah Cargo to the mix. I had also flagged Angie Smith, as well as Michael Anderson. What I liked about Hannah was actually that she's a student, and that I think that, given that the sense of urgency is hitting, honestly, the student generation more and more, I think that she brings enthusiasm and a desire to dig in and to reach as many people as possible. I just, I thought that she had a lot of qualifications, and I thought honestly that her representation would be good on the commission.
Well, it really was an outstanding field, but I also was impressed by Michael Anderson and the background that he would bring to the commission. He was my first choice.
My shortlist was Abigail McCune, Angie Smith, and Michael Anderson.
I had also flagged Abigail, so.
Okay, so I think this is a sign that we have a lot of great applicants.
Yes.
And it, there's a few that, of course, I could support. I think I'll go with Angie Smith, and that will give us four for Angie Smith. All right? Are we all okay with Angie Smith?
Mm-hmm.
That works?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
We're up to the sky for Andrew.
Yes, all right, so. Could I get a motion to appoint Angie Smith to the Climate Action Commission?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 11 is announcements of vacancies new. 11A, Housing and Community Development Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 7, 2023. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 12, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. 12A, this is Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street. One vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 10, 2023. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2024. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 31, 2023. Item number 13, a city council information.
All right, I'll start, and surely others have some information, but one thing that I'm really happy to report on was that yesterday I had the pleasure of going on the Affordable Housing Bus Tour, which was over three hours long, but it was well worth it. It was hosted by the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition and the Housing Trust Fund of Iowa City. The tour, which went through the cities of Iowa City, North Liberty, and Coroville, featured 15 homes that are just a handful of the many affordable home projects in the area. These were rentals, homeownership, and supportive rental units, single and multifamily. We all know that affordable housing plays an essential role in the social and economic development of our community. This tour highlighted the fact that our communities and our county are truly indeed have been working hard to provide affordable housing over the past few years and plan to continue doing so. So I'd like to thank Jessica Andino and Ellen McCabe for planning this tour and for all that you do.
It was almost two weeks ago now, but the mayor and I had an opportunity to go to the Iowa League of Cities Annual Meeting, Annual Convention Conference. Let me get three words for the one, but it was...
Redmond.
And Redmond, yes, that's right. It was incredibly illuminative. There were a lot of really good sessions, ranging from increasing mental health support in local municipalities, drawing on actually some examples. I mean, the thing that was great about this conference was honestly that it had to deal with practicalities and things that are going on throughout the state of Iowa, so it wasn't just abstract, like we might do this, or we might do that. So there was some really interesting presentation about a partnership between police departments and mental health professionals to help divert and get people who are in, not a criminal situation, but a mental health crisis situation, the support and follow-up that they need, and so that was really, really interesting. And there were some additional sessions that were dealt with finance, which are going to be incredibly helpful, and then ultimately, for my own part, it was the first time that I've been to this conference, and it was really cool because it was understanding the scope and the breadth of specific problems that communities are facing, and realizing that, A, we have a really, really great collaborative community that is able to draw upon partners and whatnot, but also to recognize the very specific problems that so much of Iowa has because the rural communities were able to be there and have their voices heard and talk about not only problems that they're dealing with, but also solutions that they're finding too. So it was just a really, really cool experience. It was my first time, so that's why I'm kind of pontificating on it.
Yeah, it was good. I think it does speak to the commonalities that big cities, small cities have in common, and also regardless of anyone's individual political background, home rule is across the board what communities want, because there is no two communities alike. All right, we're going to move on to item number 14, report from our city staff, and we're going to start in our city manager's office.
I was all ready to say pass, but since you brought up the League of Cities, I did want to let the counselors know that I was also there to meet with the Metro Coalition, which is a coalition built up of the 12 largest communities in the state of Iowa, and our goal was to sharpen our legislative message for the upcoming session. So as you also know, we're going to be moving towards our practice of looking at our legislative priorities coming in the next month or so. So this actually is a good time to, if there's any legislative priorities that individual counselors have or would like to add a part of the... We're kind of going through the process now of bringing all those ideas together with all those communities and kind of start to narrow it down, so this is the perfect time to add any ideas you may have, so just wanted to put that out there.
Our city attorney's office.
I'll offer this time that Jennifer Swickarath, one of the attorneys in our office, the most recent addition to our office, had the opportunity and took it to attend the International Municipal Lawyers Association Annual Conference, which was in California. It cost her last weekend, but she thought it was a great program. It is certainly robust. IMLA, as we refer to it, has a number of interest groups that are of value to the city, in my experience, including University City Group, that I participate in quarterly calls. I believe in IMLA enough that I've served as state chair for several years. I've since given up that mantle, proud as it may be, but it was a great opportunity for her to get out and make some relationships with other city attorneys from Iowa who tend to go as well, and so I was really grateful for the opportunity.
And we're going to go to our city clerk's office.
Nothing from the clerk's office.
All right, just all smiles. Item number 15, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Have a good night, all.